All right, we are live.
Okay, let's call this Public Works meeting to order Tuesday, May 12th at 11:30 a.m. First thing on the agenda is the chief with the resolution for a contract between the Williamsburg Bureau of Police and Shallow Creek Kennels. Chief Hagan, you're up.
It's real quick, Bonnie, just for the record, public safety, if anybody's watching, this is public safety. You said Public Works, just so, just so.
Oh, my gosh, you know what? How many, eight years of Public Works? I guess it's all the brain knows.
No worries. Just in case we have anybody watching, this is public.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, Chief, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I'm with you. Thought that this one was on just finance. Are these all, are we going over all of them now?
Well, this is what was on the Public Safety Committee for, for the agenda, unless you want to carry it over to finance.
No, that's fine. We, give me just one moment, please.
Sure.
Okay, before you, as a.
Chief, before you go any further, the other thing that's on public safety is the MOU between the Pulse and LLC. Did you realize that? Okay, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, and that was the one I was prepared to talk about now, but we can talk about all of them if you like.
I know, you have no problem, Chief. Go ahead.
Okay, the resolution with regard to Shallow Creek Kennels is before you, and it's for a second canine. We have managed so far in our program to raise $78,000 total. As you know, from before, 43 of that is dedicated to the first dog. And that leaves, we've only spent a little less than $27,000 on that first dog. And so we have a considerable amount more now, and that includes the entire first year's maintenance and all of that. The first dog has a remaining balance of at least $16,886 in the bank that we have left for maintenance for the next couple of years. So we're actually, the money we raise from this point forward will be for a third dog, should we choose to go that far, like our initial plan. So our plan, given the fact that Shallow Creek's operations have not been stopped, and all doing academies out there in Sharpsville, is to send Brian McGee to the academy beginning on June 22nd. He would graduate six weeks later and be back here and begin his maintenance training. He would go on June 22nd to combat some of the overtime that will be caused by his going to school. I've already asked Jordan Stoltz for us, the corporal on the midnight shift, if he would transfer over to the night watch for that time, and he's agreed to do that. And also Lieutenant Miller, Fred Miller, has volunteered to go and help work some of those shifts as well to, to prevent some of the overtime if necessary. So we have a plan in place to combat some of the overtime and most of it. And we have the money in the bank to send Sergeant McGee. Once he gets back from the academy and is certified and comes back, and then our trainer approves him for work on the street, which takes a few months, then, then Officer Minier would transfer to the midnight shift, and McGee will stay on the night watch. So we'll have both night shifts covered with the dog, should this be approved here by you today, and then on Thursday by the full body. But the program is going very well. As I said before, Officer Minier is now approved for building searches, area searches, and what we call apprehensions, which is what involves bites. And he's about to be approved for drug searches by our trainer and tracking as well. So it's going very well right now. I welcome any questions.
Adam.
What was that, Bonnie? You broke up there, I'm sorry.
Any questions?
Um, the only thing that sticks out in my mind, and this kind of ties into probably this being on finance, so we can, we may be able to have this conversation in finance instead, but the, the impact to manpower, I know you talked about, we have some, I think, shifts covered for the individual to go, or for the police officer to go to training. But in the middle of the summer here, as, as we see stuff potentially ramping up, and given the fluidity of the COVID situation, would we be wise, or would we be able, I guess, to hold off on doing this until later in the year, so we don't run into a manpower issue? I mean, that's just a kind of early thought here. I don't know if there's a financial impact to waiting. And that's the only real thing that sticks out to me on this. And again, this could be a finance conversation, so it's on the agenda for finance.
There are times during the year when overtime is lower on a normal year. What I, about a week and a half ago, I looked at the overtime, and because of calls slowing down because of the COVID restrictions, overtime was almost nonexistent. We're still seeing it at a much lower rate than we normally have. What it would be at between June 22nd and the end of July, given this situation, I don't know because of the situation. Normally, that would be a high vacation time, and that would involve some overtime. We knew when we first got into this that we would have overtime, and we knew we would have it on occasion during their training dates, and also some, although we're going to be able to eliminate a lot of it because of these volunteers that have come forward, but we knew we would have some, even when they went to the academy, accepted that then, and I'm, I'm okay with that now, just because we need these dogs and we need the capability. And, you know, so we were, we committed back then to that. I don't know that it's going to make much of a difference to September or the winter, like we did. We, we sent Minier in the winter with overtime because of the situation. But yes, in a normal year, there would be more overtime in the summer, yes.
Okay, and that answers my question, I guess, to a degree. That works.
John Mackey, do you have any questions?
No, I'm, I'm okay, Bonnie.
Chief, when we sent the, the first officer with, to Shallow Creek in December, how many weeks was that for?
The winter class has less students in it, and so they get more repetitions. So he was only gone for four weeks. All the other classes, except that one in the dead of the winter, are six weeks long, because there's more students in them.
Would it behoove us, okay, because we don't know what we're going to step into come in June, July, with, you know, if this is over with, if people start getting really antsy, what's going to happen in the outside world? Um, let me ask you this question also. When the officers go to training in Shallow Creek, they're home for the weekends, right?
Yes, ma'am.
If they're home for the weekends, do they, do they stay home, or do they? I guess they don't work, do they? They wouldn't come in to put a uniform on, would they? That's their, their, their off time?
Right.
I guess what I'm asking you, would they be called in on the weekend if necessary?
They would be off on the weekend. Sergeant McGee already has part of the weekend off as a supervisor. This would give him the whole weekend off during that time. Again, some of that shift overtime created by his absence would be mitigated by other personnel on a voluntary basis, which is actually quite extraordinary, that they're volunteering to do that. We can't make them, and it, it's, again, it's a sign of teamwork. It's a good sign that they, they're willing to do that. But yeah, they would be at home on the weekend with their family, and certainly if things continue the way they are, that, that's probably where they're going to be most of that time.
I, I guess the thing that I, you know, we're looking at budgetary, and I know this, you know, this has been dear to my heart, this, this whole program. I just, I think all of us are, are pushing back from the standpoint of where we're going to land come the end of the year budget-wise. And it sounds like we're saving money on overtime right now, because of, everything is cool, calm, and collected right now. We have no idea what's going to happen when things start opening up more and more. Is this going to create problems in the city for safety, safety problems? And to have an officer not available, even though you're going to be having, which I think is extraordinary to have two officers volunteering their time. Should we wait till December, when we only have a four-week period instead of a six-week period? You know, it's a discussion I want, you know, you know, throwing out there.
It's your call. I would rather not, obviously, or I wouldn't have it on the agenda. It's definitely your call. It's, it's really a question of when do you want this capability to be present here? This particular capability saves lives. So my, my own interpretation of it, and it's been this way since you asked me if we could do this, is the quicker the better. Within reason, certainly making sure that we have the money in place and the, the infrastructure in place, which we do now, and we know what we're doing, so. But it's really your call. If you guys want to wait, then we'll wait. I'm bringing it to you now, because I think we're ready. I don't know where we're going to be. I don't mean to sound irresponsible. I'm like you, I don't know where we're going to be at the end of the year. But I definitely know what we have to do between now and the end of the year, and that's we have to secure the city. And one of the things that makes it much safer is canines. So the sooner we can get them there, the better. If you want, want us to wait, then we'll wait. I'd rather not, but that's, it's up to you. I understand what you're saying.
We are in such a precarious position with what's going on in this world right now. And I think we're, we're, we have no answers, you know, if there's, I, you know, if this was a different time, period, in a heartbeat, I'd say go for it. Right now, you know, it's like, um, I'm really, you know, don't know where we're going to be, like everybody else. We don't know where we're going to stand come the warmer weather, when, when, if things are opened up. I don't know. I'm going to ask the rest of the committee, what do they think? John Mackey.
Yeah, well, I guess my, my question, Chief, would be, not, not, not knowing exactly what might happen with the, the hiring of Officer Heath. Hypothetically, if, if the decision is made to not hire that officer, how would, how would losing an officer for six weeks in the summer affect our, our manpower? If, if in fact, we didn't hire this officer on Thursday night?
It would, if we were just losing him off the shift and having to fill overtime, it would be obviously much more costly. In terms of the overall manpower right now, with all the vacations being canceled, or a lot of them being canceled, we have the highest manpower that I've ever seen, really in my career, except when we had like 55 officers more, you know, 20 years ago. But we have a lot of people in here, not a lot of people are taking holidays. If that, will that continue to the end of July? I don't know. If it does, then we'll still have a lot of people. If they start taking holidays and vacations between now and then, things start opening up a little more, then it'll be more traditional summer. So that's a wait and see. But the loss of one guy, particularly a supervisor, is, is a loss. And so that's why I went to these other gentlemen and asked if they would move over to assist, not just with the overtime, but also with manpower, and they agreed. So I don't, I mean, there'll be days here and there, based on days off, where there's a little overtime, or we'll go down one, but I don't know that it'll make too much of a difference. I think we'll be okay. It's more of a, a cost issue than it is a manpower issue with just one guy.
Adam, do you have any other questions?
No, I mean, I'm just kind of going back and forth in my head. I mean, I think both make sense. I mean, I, I, you can make an argument either way, to be honest with you, in either holding off till the end of the year and taking that risk, or doing it now, and, and not necessarily having a, if we needed, having a shortfall in, in manpower. I think a lot of my clarity is going to come from the conversation in finance. So I don't know.
Good, and one more thing, if, if, if I could just have another few seconds. It does relate, as Councilman Mackey was saying, to also to the hirings. Everything relates to everything else, obviously. And without getting all the way into that discussion, keep in mind this, we do lose the Assistant Chief. I also put in my memo to council, the one I sent to you, that Tom Bortz might leave. I've since talked to him, he's not going to. He actually said to me the other day that he now wants to probably stay a couple of years on the drop. So the issue with that, though, is we're going to lose the Assistant Chief at the end of the year. And so council does hold that option as far, if, if we're in dire straits, to not fill that slot, which would be the 49th slot, even if you hired these two now. Understanding that you might decide against that, if we don't hire Heath now, she has to go to an academy, so if we don't hire her till the beginning of the year, then she doesn't get back on manpower for us until next summer, the summer of 2021. So with regard to hiring, and when those people count toward manpower and can help fight overtime, it depends on whether they've been to the academy, and she has not. So if we hired her now, she would be available for manpower beginning of next year. But if we wait, it's going to be a long time.
Do you know, I'm going to throw something else out, you're, you know, and it just hit me what you said, that nobody's taking vacations because there is nowhere to go for vacations. If we don't open up, um, the, the state, say, in another month or two, we could be hit with vacations come December. And so we could, it's, it's such an unbalanced factor at this point. Do you do, you know, it's, you don't know where to go. So, you know, I don't know, you know, my heart is with going for the dog, it really is. But it's up to the committee. So any other questions?
I, I don't have any. I just, like I said, I, I think this all comes down to manpower and timing in my mind, and I think the finance discussion is going to be a part of that. So, I mean, I'll, I don't know what the right answer is, as far as a motion, one way or the other.
Well, we do need a motion.
Well, then, let's, let's do this then. I'll make a motion to send the full body of council with no recommendation and take into consideration the discussion of the Finance Committee.
John? Don't, you're muted.
I'll second that. Yeah, I think we need to talk a little bit more about this in finance.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This is passed on to a full body of council with no recommendation, depending on the conversation that is ongoing in finance. Chief, you're up with the next one also. Uh, this one I found interesting, really did, with Pulse. This is a resolution with a member, with, for a memorandum of understanding between, on the Pulse LLC and the City of Williamsport. Would you like to discuss this?
Yes, ma'am. This was an ongoing conversation. I'd like to welcome to our meeting also Anne Reiner, who's, there she is. Hi, Anne. She's the founder of On the Pulse News.
Hello.
And is an online media outlet and local here. She has already done some film work with the South Side Police. You can go onto her site and see that. It was her idea. We discussed some of the things that she might feature, and you see that there in the document attached to the resolution. She wants to do a story called "The Day in the Life of an Officer." We'll have to pick an officer. No officers who are filmed are going to be filmed without volunteering. We're not going to make anybody get in front of the camera, so part of this process will be to reach out to our officers once we start in the months to come, and make sure that we know who wants to do it. The first part will be that. The second, or one of the others, will be a story on all of our female officers. As you know, for many years, we only had one or two, and now we are up to, well, we just hired our fifth one, who starts June 1st, and one of the two being proposed right now would be our sixth. So a lot of female officers here, and we think that that would be a great story. They do some incredible work here. And then also, a story, obviously, on our canine program, newly, newly started here, and, and so she, those were just some of the ideas. I would expect this to be an ongoing relationship with On the Pulse. And we, we, this was reviewed by the solicitor. Some additional language was added so that we have complete rights to edit out information, and that also includes, as you see, city council can view it if you choose as well prior to release. So we think it's a safe agreement. We, we think a lot of Anne Reiner and her organization, and we think these videos will be a very professional look at the Williamsport Police as we go forward in our effort to achieve accreditation, and we properly recruit new officers in the future, and feature our agency the way it should be. And I welcome any questions.
Adam, I'm going to let you go first. You have to leave shortly, don't you?
Yeah, I do. So the, the contract reads to me that there's no cost to the city here. And Anne's confirming that with a head nod. Thank you very much. That, that's my really only question. Look, I, I've, I've followed On the Pulse since its inception, I believe, January of last year. Is that correct, Anne? I think, I love the platform. I think there's some really insightful and articles and media that come out with a different perspective that's needed in the community. And the videos that you've done in the past specifically are fantastic. So I have full confidence you'll do a really good job in highlighting the good work that our police officers are doing, and I fully support this. So that's awesome.
Awesome. John?
No, yeah, I just second everything Adam just said. Yeah, no, I, all three of these features are really important. But I, I think, obviously, the ride-along, the, the, the day in the life of a Williamsport Police Officer would be extremely important. Just, is that riding along with a police officer is not something everybody gets to do, and I think this would give people that opportunity to see what it's like out there. But no, this is a great idea.
I think we're all excited about this program, Chief. I really do. It's going to center, you know, put our, our police department in the spotlight, and I think we'll all be really anxious to see the finished product at this point. We have a lot of good stuff in our police department at this point, and to showcase that, I think, is going to be incredible. So, yes, thank you very much, Anne. Need a motion for this? John?
I'll, I'll make a motion to pass this along to the full body with a positive recommendation.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. Anne, thank you very much, and Chief, keep us informed of what's going on with this.
If I, just, could I, could I suggest that we then do a day in the life of a city council member and have Adam around?
I don't know if you want to follow me around.
We can do any video. Thank you all so much. I really appreciate it. Looking forward to working with them.
Thank you.
Sorry, we can't meet you in person, Anne, but maybe eventually we will.
Eventually, we will.
Take care.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is resolution designation of the agent resolution for DR 4506 COVID-19. Chief Killian, you're up.
Okay, good morning. Still morning? Almost, yeah, just about. So before you, it's just kind of a formality. It's a resolution to appoint myself as the authorized agent to move forward with our FEMA and PMA disaster recovery funding for the COVID pandemic. This is a requirement for the PMA process. This PMA DAP-1 form, which is attached to the resolution, needs to be sent to, to PMA with the appropriate information, along with a resolution confirming that, so we can continue moving forward on our, for our, our, essentially our relief funding for, you know, expenditures for PP overtime, et cetera.
Okay, any questions? Adam?
Yeah, um, do we have any kind of idea as to, I guess, how much we might be expecting in reimbursement? I mean, you don't even have to give me a figure. I mean, are we, I, I know we're tracking our expenditures, I think, citywide, specifically related to COVID-19. Is there any idea as far as, are we going to get full coverage for that, 75%? Do we have any kind of range there?
Sure. So, so this is really a multi-pronged kind of issue here. I've been studying this and following this really closely, because there's multiple funding sources available, and the question is, what funding sources do we go after for what items? Right? So realistically, the way FEMA and PMA works is they should be the last source of funding when everyone else is exhausted. So we have some grant opportunities to, to rebuild our cache of equipment, but this FEMA, PMA money here through the, the CARES Act is really going to cover the overtime expenditures, which specifically fire departments have, the fire departments had. We bumped our minimum staffing up from six during the day to seven during the day, to make sure that we're covering for our decon facility, which has been used out on Rycard Avenue, and just increase our, you know, the safety of our personnel when, when responding to these incidents. So it'll cover overtime expenses, PP that we've already purchased, you know, some equipment we purchased to get the decon facility up and running. Right now, as we sit today, we're at about $5,000, what it's cost us to this point. This, this money will cover all of those expenses moving forward. It's a 75% FEMA, 25% PMA match. There is no matching funds for us, so this is 100% coverage. I am working on a grant right now that's due on Friday, that's a supplemental grant to our traditional firefighters grant. And we're doing that as a regional project with us, Ola Cummings, South Williamsport, Loyal Sock Township right now. And that, there will be a 10% match with, match with that grant, but that grant will be specifically towards what we call surge equipment. So, you know, a few thousand masks, you know, several hundred gallons, basically, essentially just PP-related equipment. So I, hopefully, I'm answering your question directly. The FEMA-PMA grant is 100% funding for expenses that we have. Some of the additional grants could be up to a 10% match, but still, at the end of the day, we're talking probably about a $10,000 request through that grant, so it'll be about $1,000 matching funds from the city. So realistically, we're getting a substantial reimbursement, you know, back from our expenses.
Okay. And not being familiar with our history is too much with, you know, and not being familiar with our history is too much with, um, you know, how we go about different, getting different grants with different than different departments. Um, are, are you getting the support or is there support that you need in obtaining these grants from either our consultants or anybody else? Um, I mean, are, are you getting the support you need?
Um, so quite frankly, we haven't really needed support to this point. Um, because, you know, I get great information on a daily basis from, you know, across my network across the country and you know, again, the other, um, you know, information from the County Emergency Management Agency, from, you know, the state, uh, Fire Commissioner's Office. So this traditionally isn't something that comes through any of our, any of our consultants. Um, AFG grants are pretty standard firefighter grants. They're, that's a competitive process. But the FEMA PMA process comes straight from the disaster declaration that, that we've initiated. So there hasn't, uh, there hasn't been a need for much support, support, excuse me, from a consultant standpoint.
Gotcha.
We have got, we have received some information, but, uh, again, it's been, uh, the information's come after we've already been, we've already initiated a grant processes.
Okay.
We're staying, we're, we're doing our best, our due diligence to stay well ahead of the curve with, uh, with grant opportunities.
Yeah, very cool. Um, is that, is that, has that been the trend historically, at least within the fire department? You guys fairly self-sustainable?
Yes, yeah.
Gotcha. Okay.
Uh, because, uh, honestly, there's not a ton from a federal standpoint, um, and a state standpoint, there's not a ton of, of things out there.
Okay.
You know, we go after every single thing that exists. Uh, recently, over the last several years, we've got a lot, we've got numerous smaller grants which exist from some private entities. You know, we're always digging for grant funding, but, um, you know, our money is, our, our grant dollars are becoming less and less and more and more competitive. Um, so, you know, it's just something that we're, we're balancing out our needs versus our wants and really trying to go after, after the big ticket items, but, uh, we've been staying pretty, again, pretty well ahead of the curve from the fire department standpoint. Again, the, the FEMA and PMA grant for COVID specifically is as City of Williamsport. So that's all-inclusive citywide. And that is traditionally what happens with any declared disaster, whether it be a flood, a tornado, you know, hurricane, you name it. If there's, there's damage citywide, that funding is going to cover, you know, city expenses in general. So, um, the, the other department heads have been great getting me information on a regular basis as to what their expenses are. And quite honestly, they haven't had many. Um, we've been trying to absorb as much of that as the, you know, with the fire department as possible because most of it's been PP related, masks, gloves, gowns, you know, just e-equipment to protect our employees.
Cool. I'm good.
John, any questions? Chief, I have to say you have always gone after grants for years. Okay, so, uh, it's been really appreciated the way you have done this for so many years. And I think, um, having our name out there, that you have put our name out there, um, at times I think is very beneficial for us getting other, other grants that are available because I think they know the name Mark Killian at this point. Um, and we do thank you very much for, you know, all the work that you do do with this. Um, has there been a lot of calls for, for COVID at all in the city?
Yes. Um, so, so I can tell you, we, so the way our dispatch protocols are going right now, um, there, we're not limiting the number. So we run EMS calls also, obviously. Um, there's dispatch procedures in place when they deem that there's a potential for an issue. So, you know, I, I'd say pretty much on a daily basis, we're running, running incidents where we have, uh, we just about have a direct, direct contact with potential or positive patients. So, you know, our personnel are, are on the front lines every day dealing with this, much like, you know, police and our EMS partners and the rest of public safety across the county. But, uh, you know, we're doing, uh, doing the best we can with, uh, with being smart and following our procedures and wearing our PPE. So fortunately, we haven't, uh, you know, since the initial exposure issue we had, um, we've, we've made some adjusted adjustments and, and been lucky so far.
Yeah, it, it is scary that you guys are out there, you know, with, with this, this COVID. It is frightening and, um, because it's such a disease and, uh, you that nobody knows who's carrying, carrying it at this point. So we have to be so, so careful and, uh, want to thank you and the police department for everything that you do with this because it is very, uh, it's, it's just a scary time. That's all there is to it. And a lot of us, you know, I, for me, I've been sheltered. So, um, but it's, it's frightening the people that are out there that don't think, take this seriously. And, um, and I know you have to protect everybody that you're, you come in contact with, be the fire or the police. So thank you very much. I need a motion for this.
I'll make a motion to pass this on to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried with a positive recommendation. Next thing on the agenda is resolution authorizing, um, resolution authorizing CFAI accreditation process for the Bureau of Fire. Chief, you're up.
Bonnie, I'm going to jump off here.
Okay.
Sure. So, um, what you see before you is a, a resolution to, for the Bureau of Fire to, um, enter the process of CFEI, uh, accreditation as a registered agency. Uh, and really, all this, all this does is give us access to accreditation information. I guess, uh, let me back up a little bit. Um, I provided you with a several-page-long kind of memo to try to describe, um, you know, this process, uh, how it, how involved it is, what it covers. Uh, and, and it's very exciting for me because it's something that, uh, I've looked at for many, many years, but, uh, you know, it was a, a kind of a mission of mine in taking this position to work, work our department, um, through the accreditation process because I think there's a tremendous amount that can be gained from it. And especially, you know, kind of partnering, for lack of a better term, with the police department while they're going through their accreditation process. I thought it would be tremendously beneficial for both of our, our public safety agencies to be working together, you know, through this process. So, um, CFI is an, an international accreditation agency. And it's the, really the only accreditation agency that exists from a fire department standpoint. We would be, uh, one of six agencies, only six agencies in the Commonwealth that is either accredited or in the, um, you know, listed as a registered agency in the process. So, um, I think it'd be a pretty, a, a pretty good, um, you know, pretty good accomplishment just to get in the process. Um, but what realistically what this does and, and the fee associated with this, uh, again, gives us access to all the information we need to start working through the self-assessment process because accreditation, again, much like you've, I'm sure you heard with, uh, with Chief Hagan and the police department's process, is very much about, um, self-assessment and measuring where you are to the standards, um, you know, and working up to those standards. And it's a a significant process. It's going to take a long time and a lot of work. Um, you know, the realistic timeframe for this is about a five-year, five-year process from our standpoint, you know, fire department standpoint, start to finish. Covers every aspect of our operations, um, you know, and our administrative ability and how we provide service and you know, it's, it's going to require us to take an in-depth look at our department through, um, you know, risk assessments and strategic planning and a lot of formal, um, you know, formal processes, which again, I'm, I'm incredibly excited about because it helps us establish a vision, you know, for what we want to be moving forward as we hope to move, you know, into a more regional concept. And, uh, yeah, it's just, uh, so really this is the tip of the iceberg, just to get in the process and start working through and see, you know, get a good, a good standard on measuring ourselves. The entire process ends, um, you know, with accreditation, uh, with a peer review. So the, uh, CFAI, CFAI sends a peer review team in, you know, when we're ready to actually start the um, formal accreditation process and, and become an accredited, accredited agency. They send a peer review team in which looks through all of our documentation and all of our information and then makes the determination on whether, you know, we can, you know, we can be awarded accreditation or not. Again, there's, uh, about three hundred and fifty accredited agencies, uh, international, the vast majority of them are, are in the United States, but there's only three in Pennsylvania. So it, it's, it's a long process. It's a lot of work, but I think it would be very beneficial to us to start working through that process to, to get a good, a good kind of, you know, perspective on where we are and where we can go.
John, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, no questions. I mean, I'm, I'm obviously in full support of this. I mean, just, just as, it's as important for the police and the fire equally. Um, I'm assuming that, um, Chief, you're pretty confident that after five years of putting work into this, we would, we would get accredited? Is that, I mean, is there a reason why there's only three in Pennsylvania? Such a long process and people?
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's a long process. It's in depth. Um, it's a lot of work. And, but the, the good thing with us, I'll say, is I think we're a very flexible organization that's able to, you know, uh, we're not a, a big, a, a large, you know, metro-sized department that's not able to institute the changes that the accreditation process may, you know, may entail. Um, and I think this is a really good time for us to enter this too, with the youth of our department and the leadership transition. Uh, but I have no reason to believe honestly that we wouldn't be accredited because the good thing is it doesn't say, the accreditation process does not require you have X amount of staffing or X number of firehouses, or it, it's all self-assessment based on accreditation standards. Um, so, you know, realistically, what we get out of it is what we put into it. So if we, you know, we commit to the process and we work through this with our entire team, you know, on the, on the department, I, I don't have any, no doubts, we'll, we'll accomplish it. Again, it's just, it's just being able to start something and knowing that you're not going to see it come to fruition for several years. But the process itself really is what, you know, I want to stress with this entire thing. It's about the process and about what we learn about ourselves through the process and what we can do throughout that process to provide a better service, you know, with, with the formal accreditation just being kind of the, the icing on the cake.
Great. No, yeah, I'm in full support.
Think it's an excellent program, Chief. Um, really thrilled that both of our departments are going after accreditation, which I think is cool. Um, need a motion, John?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to pass this along with a positive recommendation.
I second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried with a positive recommendation to body of council. Next thing on the agenda is resolution authorizing agreement between the City of Williamsport Bureau of Fire empowered DMS for a software system.
Okay, so kind of wrap our resolutions up here with, um, uh, this one regarding powered DMS. And, and again, in, in working closely with Chief Hagan and the, the leadership that he's shown over there in the police department. Uh, really what, uh, give you a little background as to how this came about because I think this is important. Um, any communications that historically for years that have come from, from the Bureau of Fire to its own personnel in the form of operational guidelines, memory and then special orders. Um, we disseminate those by paper to every person, multiple copies. And then we can't always guarantee that those, that that information is, you know, accurately received by the end user put into place. You know, we're just, we're, we're creating a tremendous amount of paperwork and a challenging system to get information out to our people. Um, that in conjunction with, um, what we've began to do over the last several years, and that's, uh, look at every one of our operational guidelines and try to, try to build out our operational guidelines, which really haven't been, uh, having gone through many updates for the last twenty-five years or so, um, has shown how archaic we are in form of, in the form of communication and dissemination of information within our department. Uh, so after doing a little research, reaching out a-again through my network to what other departments are using on how they send information out there, powered DMS came up, uh, several times and it was kind of interesting. I asked Chief Hagan if he was familiar with the system and he had, he informed me again, and it was something that they had just gone through and, and instituted to help with their accreditation process. So I'll say over the last, uh, six weeks or so, and especially driven by the amount of information and the speed at which that information has to be disseminated based on the COVID response. Um, we were changing policies literally by the hour as we got information in and we made adjustments to the way we operated. Um, and, and it showed us how difficult that communication was down to even a small department like ours because, you know, we're trying to do things, um, interdepartmentally in conjunction with our other public safety partners at the hospital or with the police department. Um, and, and our, you know, our, our current form of communication just became a, a tremendous challenge. So, uh, we did a demo with powered DMS. Um, actually sat with, uh, is it Officer Otaviano Chief or Sergeant Otaviano? I'm not sure if he's got rank.
Sergeant Otaviano. Sergeant Otaviano.
Um, sat with, uh, Sergeant Otaviano, who's kind of the powered DMS guy in the police department end of things. Uh, uh, between Chief Funkston, I sat through a, a demo by, uh, Don Filippi from powered DMS. And quite frankly, we were blown away by what that system could do for us from not only a document transmission standpoint, um, you know, and managing our current system of, of communications flow down to our personnel. But what, what it could do not only, um, with that, but also with training and with the upcoming, hopefully accreditation process. Uh, much like the police department are using powered DMS for their accreditation, uh, powered DMS also offers the complete accreditation program for fire department as well. So we would be able to use that system to manage our entire accreditation process, disseminate all of our operational guidelines, department communications, memos, special orders, et cetera, individually through our department, uh, manage our required monthly trainings, actually build exams and tests and assessment tools within powered DMS. Um, and the great thing is with Chief Hagan's willingness to partner, um, with us is essentially we would be under a city system with both public safety, um, organizations functioning under that system. So I'll use the example of HR has a policy that they want to send out, send out, um, you know, across, uh, across our agencies. They could do it with the click of a mouse and every person in fire and police can receive that. Um, from an EMA perspective, you know, given the pandemic, if there's information we want to push out for the, the PP that's necessary on a specific type of call, we can do that to all, you know, about eighty, eighty-five people through our fire and police departments. Again, with the, the click of a button and make sure that it's received, you know, they have to do electronic signatures to verify that it's received. Um, so it, it gives us a lot of, uh, a tremendous efficiency tool and a way to increase our communication across the board. Um, and I should, I, I guess I should clarify too. What we are doing simply is adding users onto the police department's current system. Um, through, up until the time the police department's contract is up on February 2nd of 2021. And at that point, um, Chief Hagan and I will split the cost of the system and then cover, you know, the individual costs of each one of our users. Um, this money, uh, is, is, uh, available in our training line item. Uh, you know, within our budget, so it's nothing additional we're asking for financially.
So was the cost of $1,712.89, is that your part of the share?
Correct. So actually, um, you should have received an updated resolution yesterday because that cost went, went up. I apologize for that. Um, the, the cost right now after adding, um, looking through this and adding the, uh, the CFAI accreditation portion, um, for the remainder, you know, till the end of the contract is $2,483.94. And that is, that is what, so I'll break that down for you. That cost covers the licenses for the users for the fire department. Um, for the, the standard powered DMS and the training package. That covers, uh, a thousand dollars of that is for a, is for powered DMS to basically come in and rebuild our system to function effectively with both departments and to train us on how it can be used effectively and within both departments. That's a one-time cost. Um, so essentially, the, we'd only be looking at about a fifteen hundred dollar, excuse me, I have the dot, I have the number here exactly in the memo I provided. Um, to add the fire department to what the police, to the police department's system yearly would be about $2,375. Um, so we're asking right now to spend $2,483.94 to get this system up and running, up and running immediately. Um, that will cover us until December, or excuse me, February 2nd of 2021. And then the, uh, the fee above what the police department's annual fee is for us would be $2,375 per year. Um, and I can, I'll send you the updated stuff. I was under the impression GNS was going to send out the, the new stuff so I can, I'll make sure.
It, it, she sent some, it didn't come down.
Okay.
What she sent. And, and I called her this morning and she didn't have the, uh, all the info for some reason.
Okay.
Uh,
I'll judge for that.
She didn't think that it was, you know, she said to ask you when this She didn't think that it was, you know, she said to ask you when this came up.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make sure you get an updated copy of the resolution and the memo that I attached to it with the, the explanation.
Yeah, the, the, it just didn't come down. I don't know about you, John, but I didn't get it. The thing that I do have to ask, okay, what, what we're doing is what, what we've wanted to do for a long time is to have a cohesiveness between the departments. The only one that's left out at this point is codes. Would that be, uh, beneficial for, for them also?
I, I do think it would. Um, I think the bigger question would be how we, you know, how we integrate them within the system. And, you know, what, how we use them and make sure the system's going to work for them, um, which would be a question, you know, obviously I, I discussed with, uh, you know, Chief Hagan and I can discuss with Mr. Gerardi um, on how, you know, what information we could put on there. And, and again, we, police and fire are very, are, are very document-driven departments when it comes to special orders and memorandums and operational guidelines. I mean, we function, you know, with, with what's on black and white. And I'm not a hundred percent positive how, how codes, um, you know, how that works for codes. So it would be a very minimal cost to add them. And in my opinion, it would make a whole lot of sense to do that, you know, one way or another, just so we could have all of our public safety agencies working under one umbrella. Um, but that's definitely a discussion, uh, to be had with, uh, Mr. Gerardi, given that it's only, it would only be an addition of probably six or seven users.
Chief, I think that would be something that would be who the city, because it's something that we wanted years ago. As far as putting everybody on, on, under one umbrella, that everybody knows what everybody's doing. Our code seems to always be left out.
Mrs. Katz, if I could jump in. It, it, this is something that we have at a very high level talked about is not, not only adding codes to it, but also adding streets and parks to it, so that we can, um, we can put policies out across the entire city and track, um, the receipt of those policies.
Yeah, I think that's an important thing to, to, to mention. This is realistically could be a citywide, you know, document management system where, again, all city policies and procedures are, are easily accessible. There's, it's, it's app-based and you can pull things up on your cell phone, you know, and immediately read documents. It, there's, um, kind of accountability tools in there that require you to sign when you, you know, digitally sign when those documents are read, so we can ensure that's being done. Uh, so there's a tremendous benefit, I think, citywide to this system. Um, and I'm, uh, again, just from a fire department standpoint, we're very excited about being able to move forward with something that just, from an efficiency standpoint, will make our, our life so much, so much nicer.
Your paper trails have been astronomical. When you stop and think about it, or even when you go out to an, an incident, uh, the paperwork that you have to carry with you, uh, is to me absolutely ludicrous. And to have something that you won't have to, to, uh, count on that anymore, to have it in the palm of your hand, I think is just so beneficial all the way around. And that's why I think every department should have this accessibility instead of, uh, always going to binders.
Yep. Yep. So we've, uh, we've made, uh, we've worked very diligently over the last several years to, again, kind of come into the twenty-first century here with technology. Our, our instant recording system is, uh, is working very well for us right now on how we enter information into that. We use that for occupancy inspections and, and pre-plans and, and a whole bunch of other, you know, other operational, uh, um, you know, items. We've partnered with Old Lake Coming Township on a, a, uh, system called I Am Responding, which is tied into our iPads that we use in our vehicles. That again, were grant funded. Um, that has come at no cost to the city. Old Lake Coming has, you know, has offered to, to work with us on that program. Um, so this would kind of be, you know, round out the trifecta here on, on how we manage our, our information and, and allow us to, to go, um, I don't want to say completely digital, because it's hard to go completely digital, but, uh, about as close as we're going to get.
Which is fantastic. John, do you have any questions?
No, I have none.
I'm just thrilled that this is all coming to fruition at this point. Thank you very much, Mark. I need a, I need a motion, John.
Yeah, I will make a motion, pass this along with a positive recommendation.
I'll second that. All those in favor? I passed on to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. Thank you, chiefs.
Thank you very much. I, I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, last thing, you know, on, one of the last things is, uh, Citizen Core Report. I don't see Jeff Reader up here. I don't think he's here, is he, Chris? Did you hear from him at all?
I have not heard from him or seen him try to enter the meeting.
Okay, I'll get in touch with him afterwards and see for next meeting to see if he has anything. Obviously they're not doing meetings at this point, so, uh, but it'll be interesting to see if he's hearing anything from the neighborhood watch groups.
I also didn't send him an invite, which may have, uh, been an oversight on my part, so.
Oh, could you make sure that you do that next time? So we, uh, so it's here with, what he has to say, what's going on in the neighborhoods.
Right. I, I generally only send the invite out to, to council and department heads, so.
Yeah, we, we should keep Jeff in, in the loop here. Okay. Okay, um, next thing on the agenda is any related items? Um, anybody have any, anything to say?
I just, uh, this is, this is a, a serious comment about the, I think this On The Pulse idea with the police department's great. And Chief Killian, I would maybe say also that we could look into doing something like that for the fire department as well.
Well, I'll, I'll say this, you know, off the record, if On The Pulse wants to come and see who the police department look up to, they're more than welcome to stop at the firehouse anytime. I, I think that would be, uh, uh, but in all seriousness, I was just talking to Chief, uh, Chief Funkston about that. I think that would be fantastic. I think, uh, you know, our relationship, police and fire from a public safety standpoint is stronger than, than I've ever seen it in my career here and, uh, and it's, it's exciting, um, to see, you know, us getting some, some good, good press out of that. So police department's doing great work on the ground every day, so. Yeah, we'd definitely be interested.
I've said it before, I'll say it again, police and fire are the most, um, visible, uh, representation of city government that people, you know, it's, it's so it's vitally important that people understand how difficult your jobs are, um, and how important they are. So, yeah, anything we can do to forward that mission is definitely needed, so.
Appreciate that.
Plus, I don't think the public realizes how many hours everybody puts into, to making, uh, both these departments run the way they do. I, you know, it's, uh, it's incredible. So, uh, I, yeah, I think the pulse is going to be, uh, hopefully, uh, uh, an eye-opener for a lot of people. And, uh, the fire department would even be better too, to see, uh, what you guys have to do with the limited amount of manpower that you both have.
So one thing, if I may here, um, you know, we've been kind of racking our brains as a fire department uh, over the last couple of months, given this pandemic, because we are so community-focused and, you know, much like the police, we're used to being out in the community and interacting with the community. Um, so one of the things we have done, and I don't know if either of you have seen it, is we've started, um, started some, uh, Facebook and YouTube videos with Chris Cooley's help, doing some phenomenal, uh, video editing and filming for us. And, uh, we started our Read With A Firefighter program and our Learn With A Firefighter program, and we pushed out some, some videos so far. And, and I'll be talking to Chief Hagan here about trying to, trying to pull, uh, some of the police in there to, to do some public safety, you know, public safety videos. So I think, uh, again, to, to Councilman Matthew's point, um, you know, our, we have a tremendous responsibility to, to interact with our community and we don't take that lightly. So, you know, we want to make sure we're, we're leading a way on, uh, on, you know, keeping the community involved and, and getting as much information out to them as possible.
I wasn't aware that this was being done, which I think is really incredible. And maybe we can get some press on this, so it could be more well-known that you're doing this.
It's been, I'm sorry, it's been, uh, very well-received on, on social media. I mean, several thousands of, of views so far. Um, again, we've had our members, you know, reading kids' books, um, you know, that we put out to the public and we've done, uh, a couple with, you know, um, video tours of our equipment and, you know, showing the firefighters wearing their gear. And we have, actually Chris is coming over tomorrow morning, uh, to film, you know, film a few other videos. So, uh, it's, it's worked very well for us, you know, in, in a time that we can't be out there interacting face-to-face with, uh, with the kids specifically like we normally would. Um, you know, they're, they're one of our biggest target audiences.
Fantastic. Great. Any other questions? Any other, uh, statements? With nothing else, uh, John, I need a motion to adjourn.
Yep, so move, motion.
Second, all those in favor? Adjourned. See you all at finance.